Item on the agenda is roll call. Everybody's accountable for this. Charlotte, this traffic should be here just a little bit. Next item is order business approval of the agenda. Everybody's had the opportunity to look the agendas over. Do I hear a motion? We set the print?
I make the motion.
I have a motion there. Second. I have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Post same. Here you go. Next item is also approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. That being the June seventeenth work session and also during the eighteenth record call meeting. Do I hear a motion? Do we set the print?
I make the motion.
I have a motion. I hear a second. I have a second. Any comments or discussion? Any comments, discussions? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Post same. Here you go. Thank you. City manager, correct? There's no public here?
No, sir.
Visitor presentation. We came to the podium and just for our clerk and person, Russell Oliver, downtown redevelopment plan.
Hi, I'm Eric Landen. I'm the planning director for the regional commission located here in Darien right down the road. I was here a few months ago, maybe more than a few months ago, to let you know that we were kicking off a downtown study on Darien in partnership with Georgia Power. We've had a few drafts circulated around. I think we have a final document. Russell Oliver is our senior planner, works at CRC, also lives in downtown Darien, so he's the author of the document and he's here to answer any questions you may have or fill you in on any details that you wish. Thanks. Okay. All right. I just want to go through the downtown plan and its purpose and then I'll open it up to any questions or comments you may have. So the purpose of the Darien downtown plan was to update overall lean for downtown Darien, provide any kind of previous concepts and design ideas in order to enable the city, property owners, and citizens to make informed strategic decisions about future development state enhancements. This plan details a framework system, identifies the elements to interface with closely in development strategy, street skate design, parking and circulation, lighting, parks and open space, and finally there's a chapter in the end with information strategies which lays the steps to promote the city in following terms of prioritization and funding. Over the years, the city of Darien, Georgia has been successful in preserving historic structures and resources, promoting economic development downtown, and particularly along Broad Street and blocks framing the historic Bourbon Square. Now, new restaurants and retail businesses helped enlighten and enrich the downtown experience. New townhomes and apartments have also presented new housing options. But even with recent success, downtown still faces challenges that threaten its competitive advantage. It lies along the corridor of other communities that can attract desirable businesses by offering the same small-town atmosphere. So if Darien fails to maintain and improve the character of its downtown core and enhance its vitality, then its competitive edge in a broader arena of a regional, economic, and community development would be diminished. The city is therefore taking the initiative to create a plan to stay competitive. The ideas presented in this document are for a future character, one that does not yet be realized, but it can be easily be achieved by the city, county, and business leaders put forth concerted effort towards implementation. All of the recommendations in this plan are excited to work together in a cohesive urban design system. The following are reasons why the Darien downtown plan should be implemented. This serves as a model for others to learn from by fostering good planning through its methodology and implementation. It represents excellence in analysis, writing, graphics, and design. It has a positive impact on local and regional objectives. One, it ties in with the regional plan of coastal Georgia. It ties in with the comprehensive economic development strategy, and it also ties in with the city of Darien comprehensive plan. This delivers developed vision for downtown and addresses community needs with a long-range vision. It improves on safety and facilities for bicycles and pedestrians through better street skate design and lighting. Fosters a sense of place as it integrates into and enhances surrounding neighborhoods. Supports mixed-use development within the downtown area, promotes historical preservation and environmental conservation, and it increases awareness in the community of the benefits and affords a good plan. Now with that, I'll open any kind of questions to...
Russell, I know one of the future things, particularly in chapter two, that's well changed since this went to press and we all did this. It's simply the fact of the eyes and it's going to be the rest of the night is the strength of it.
Right.
So, I mean, this document is fluid.
Yes, sir.
It's fluid and will adjust accordingly.
Yes.
Yes. Do you agree it is a fluid document?
Yes, I do agree it is a fluid document. Any comments, raise the hand. We can make those changes.
All right. I heard you several times talk about the lighting and then I see in the back, you know, this is, this is something that I think this is foremost to get this lighting done. You know, you talk about bicycles, pedestrian, you know. For a while now, we have been, we have been going through this about lighting in downtown. So it is, it is past time to light the city up.
I agree.
When you come across that bridge, if that store is closed, it doesn't look like this city's open.
I agree.
And it is, you know, that should be number one. Not in the back of the book. I think it needs to be in the front.
Well, the, the book is, is marked in a certain sort of framework to where that fit in there logically. Now, earlier in the book also, there's a map on lighting. So we worked with Georgia Power, traveled through here at night, mapped every single light that was out, ones that might be LED, ones that might be high-pressure sodium, and then we came in next day during the day to do the same kind of survey. So we've already talked with Georgia Power about changing out some of those lights. They're still continuing to do their highway conversion project for the LED lights, and they said that that was slated to be done in 2019. But I do agree with you that this downtown must need to be lit up. I live on Second Street and I will, I will walk downtown in my own neighborhood and I get pulled over by the police because I'm walking at night and it's down a dark alley and they can't see me. And I've got a headlamp on and a flashlight and a walking game and I look like I'm walking, but then I get accused of doing something else nefarious because it's not well lit.
And we've had all of the folks from Georgia Power, I called them after you gave them the list. Actually, the police department went through the neighborhood night shift and I would say ninety-nine percent of those lights have been replaced already. And I know what you're talking about, the study of daylight, and we're looking at that as well.
I think the last major strip that's to be changed out is on Unit Seventeen, to change over from the study of daylight to LED.
And I know when we get that new bridge, they, you know, maybe, maybe they say that we're saving the turtles and don't want to put lights on there, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah. I would suggest, I mean, in the documents suggesting pedestrian scale lighting.
I don't want to go along with council scheme. If you come from the other way, coming out of say Fifth Street and coming back this way, it's, it's dark. So like we've been setting for saying about strange building and other things, public safety is one of our key principles to overlook out.
Right.
So lighting is something definitely. I noticed on some of the additions or, and on here, there's some big changes from one picture to the other picture. Like for example, here on the corner, we got the friendly express like it is now and the other picture shows us a big, if you would.
Yeah, those were examples to show what could be possible. You know, it was, when we discussed earlier on in this process, it was thought that we could do a little bit more with the plan than just lighting and just parking. So we took it a step further to go above and beyond and show the city, show you all here what, what is possible, what kind of business leaders can look forward to if they want to change over any of the properties. Because as you come into that bridge, there could be changes to make it more of a, an urban core rather than having a gas station there and have businesses directed across here. I also agree with more walkable environment.
Well, see, you know, that's, that, that would be a shock for people to notice here and gone, you know, say years come by and we had a big build.
Well, what he's, what he's looking at was possibilities and he's just trying to put some ideas in our heads and business owners' heads and everybody else's heads. As far as the determination as to what happens in that building, he's, or his study simply looks at the best and wisest use of, uh, use of a piece of property. That is all. It is certainly not, and any way for it to be.
Yeah, I can see Robert Oliver is going to be using it.
But also you're saying kind of cross the bridge, coming, coming north across, you're saying that, that's where we need to...
I mean, if you cross the bridge into downtown, it needs to feel like you're in downtown. It doesn't need to feel like you're coming off the interstate and coming to a gas station. I'm not saying just the feeling, but it is also like the highest and best use of that property, if it were mixed-use and it had housing there, that would be the highest and best use. You would make more money with that piece of property by doing that than a gas station.
Well, I agree with you. It looks good and it's, it's very nice and all, but it's going to give us a big city effect instead of what we have.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're getting that with our businesses probably now. So it's to continue that character on who boards the downtown core.
So you want more migrant?
Yes. Don't we all?
Yeah. I, I come from the city, so I know the town.
I have enough lighting where I can talk. I have enough lighting.
I like it. I like that.
Any more comments or questions?
I want to just compliment the committee that worked on this. I see some of the names and a little more and, because one of the things I always get is things like this, what are we going to do? And if you don't have a plan, you automatically pretty much want to feed them. We've got a Tim plate. Perfect. They don't make those things much anymore, but I think this is far cry from where we were. I, I like it a lot. I really do. I've had this for a while since I've been out there looking at it. So let's, let's just keep moving forward and get as much done as we can.
We've dealt a lot of time, effort, and study went into it, so we appreciate everything. Got some real good, great ideas.
Yeah, well, I've lived downtown, you know, the whole time I've been working for the CRC. I moved here from Athens, Georgia, and I really love it, it's a small town too, but, you know, living down here and walking downtown every day or every night, you know, you get to, you see things and, you know, I, I hope that they can help us in the plan.
How do we get this out? Is this going out online to the public?
Once I take your comments from tonight, that any changes that we make in this running by, then we can make it publicly available. But since there are some changes that need to be made, I had to wait until next week.
Thank you Tom Russell. This took your time to put together and we understand all the hard work that you and the CRC put into this, and I appreciate you listening to the things that I have to say regarding the downtown. So, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's kind of like Mr. Losson had to say, all this is, is a general blueprint of the best and wisest use of property and not, it's, it's not to say it's, that it's going to happen tomorrow or the next day or the next day. So we just slow down our thinking on this and just roll with it and see what develops and then as things come before the council, then you can kind of reference this plan, reference the comprehensive plan, and see if it fits within what the parameters are and try and go with it.
It's a very nice looking book and we look good in color.
Yes, sir. That's, that's been, that's been years of living here and years of photographs.
It does look good. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Any more comments or questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Well, I know. And of course, they don't have to do perennals. They won't have to that long. Okay, city manager, am I correct? It's all visitor presentation?
That is correct.
All is so great. There's no unfinished business?
Yes, sir, there is not.
And I want to thank everybody for your time and dedication in getting everything done on time and order. Uh, next is new business, consider approval of end of governmental agreement between the city and the county concerning the county's one percent transportation, special purpose, local option sales, and use tax, and we will take action on this tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We considered approval of the end of governmental agreement.
I make the motion.
I have a motion. I hear a second. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
I have a second. Any comments or discussions? Any comments, discussion? Everybody got full understanding and okay with it? And again, I want to invite everybody workshops before the meeting, thus when we really get into some good discussion and each and every one of y'all gives you the opportunity also to put in your comments and suggestions.
I have some discussion because I don't have a clue which way this council is going to vote, so this one is too important not to have a discussion and then we vote. And I may not go the way we think it should go. Any way you go, you know, everybody's in the room, you're always happy. So I guess I'll begin it. Everybody know the history of, well, not everybody, but a lot of history about this. Newspaper, popular on the internet now, and citizens are talking about it. And all I can say is that perhaps the manager and the attorney and Mr. Schem can, can join in and say what they want to say. It's too important. Is, uh, we did talk about it and if I'm not mistaken, this is the one that we're going to hold on that deals with the eighty-twenty. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, the eighty-twenty, was a lot of discussion about that. Some are happy with it, some are not happy with it. How much the city is going to get, and there's a whole lot of unknowns. I'm hoping besides myself, some of the others would deal with the unknowns. And we're almost fighting over something that may or may not happen. Complaining over something that may or may not happen, but I leave that to others to deal with. Right now, my understanding is that it's at eighty-twenty and there's a few bells and whistles in there, and I would have the manager or someone bring that out later. First, go at it, most all of us in the city agree with maybe thirty percent. Something good to me. And somewhere down the line, it, it went down to twenty percent. And it looks like that's where it's at. The county has already voted and now it's up to us. I only see, it's probably three options, but I only see two options. Uh, one, we agree with them and the county and the city, if this small miracle happened, we'll have some funds. If we vote against it, um, I went to the county commissioners meeting with our attorney and council scheme, and they already have made a decision. What if we don't come along with it? Because we did not agree with the twenty percent. And, uh, they pretty much say that they're going to go alone. And if they go alone, unfortunately, that means the city gets nothing to be shipped over to our car for roads, but I think it's eight-tenth of one mile that's been approved through the county, through the county commission, Black Road. I think that was all that I saw. Was it more? Go around, please correct me. If they went alone, and I think we, yeah, we would lose, I think it's one point two eight million dollars that goes away because the statute of the law only recommends, uh, not recommend, but says they can only get seventy-five percent. I called our attorney simply because I did not know. When you don't know, you ask someone. And I said, can the county go alone? Trust but verify. Our attorney, sharp attorney, we say, Watson, they can go alone. Trust, but I did too much research, so they can go alone. Still baffles me, and I've said it to some news media, even before the county vote, the bottom line is, it's kind of like, why were we having a meeting in the first place? They can give us twenty percent. They can give us thirty or forty percent. They can give us two percent. They have the power to do that, and that is the law. I'm concerned about which way we're going to vote today because if it's two and two, then it can be the mayor splits the vote and they can go either way. I'm inclined to not take a chance and see what the county is going to do. Not that I agree fully with the twenty percent, but why would I vote to lose one point nearly three million dollars because I'm upset we didn't get more than twenty percent? Uh, I'll narrow it down, but this is very emotional to me. I did plenty of research and there are some counties that voted, Calquit County. So you can make other decisions. They didn't go with the road model, which sounds easy. Sounds very easy. You know, county has this many roads, we have this many roads, so they should get all the money. That sounds perfect. There is nothing in the statute that says that's the way to go. Other counties do not go that way. There's all many different ways you can go. Calquit, they've got, uh, only sixty-two point four percent for the county. All the other money was distributed to the city, the little small, little cities that were in there. And what shocked me, they even decided to give money to the airport authority, parked in recreation legally with their tea splash. So there's more than one way. I will close with this. The attorney said something that took me down another road. There's something you can't quantify just in a mileage with what the city does. And the biggest one that I saw, because I'm into development, community development, housing development, and things of that nature, every business, every house that's built in the city of Darien is the easiest money for the county there is. I like doing business like that. I like making money that kind of way, but I don't have to work hard. It's being honest. Every house we build, we do all of the hard work. Spectres here have to do that. We have to handle all of the paperwork and the county get most of the tax dollars every time. Ninety-five. Most people didn't even know that. I've been doing it for twenty years and I'm glad we're moving. We're moving in the right way. We're going to spend over two million dollars, I think I heard, for different projects, especially for out there. Every business out there depends on the city, water, and sewer. Millions of dollars, therefore the county. We get very few dividends from that. We don't collect taxes out there that much. So I can't answer it all like the attorney, but he sparked me in that direction and I was like, wow, you're right. You can't just feel it that way. And everybody went with the road thing, but there's nothing in the constitution saying it has to be done that way. But we're in a dilemma in my closing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for not ringing the bell on me. Uh, we damn good can do it and we damn good we don't. I'm inclined not to vote, but I want to hear from the others. Well, we didn't get what we want, we didn't get close. The city bent a lot. The county bent none at all. They came in with twenty percent and they stuck to it. And there's a big reason why. They don't need our vote to make the decision. I wish I knew that in the beginning, but like I tell folks, I got a PhD in that now, at least a doctorate. Five years from now, I mean, I'd be here. We've got the youngest council over there. I already, I won't say old, but I heard she's getting old. She may be here. When this comes back again very soon, we'll be more than wiser the next time around. And if we look at it, as Calquit, Georgia has done, Savannah, Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia has done, uh, they share it. They, uh, they get more because of the extra things that they are doing. And I love what Calquit have done, but they could have gotten eighty percent, but they walking away with sixty-two percent and spreading it out for the betterment of the entire county. Every road that's going to get paid and every ditch, and that breaks my heart, and I'm on the ditch committee. Nobody put down one dollar in here for ditches, not the city, not the county. Yes, I know we put down miscellaneous, but that was an oops. That was an oops. We all should have been saying, fix these ditches, but this is a thirty-year problem and no one has done anything. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more comments or questions?
Well, I, I don't want to go along on this, but, you know, we met with the county. We sat down and we had our differences. They stated what they wanted and we stated what we wanted. When we left out of that meeting, I trusted, and I said this in front of their council meeting, in front of their commissioner meeting, and I say it tonight, I trust our commissioner. Our Kate Karwaki is our county commissioner, and she served on that board. I said then, after the meeting didn't go the way we was hoping it would go, but I did say I trust her and our city manager, our city attorney, to come up with something that would work for all of us. And, you know, county commissioners are new. We have three brand-new ones in there. I have to trust the three that stayed and the two that slipped. I have to put my trust in them. This is going to be what the citizens want. I've got one vote. Every citizen in the city and the county has one vote, and that's going to, going to decide this. Whether we do it is still going to be decided by the citizens. So there again, I do respect that county commissioner and he held tight to what he thought was right. We fought for what we thought was right, and it was a learning experience for me. It was. I'll be better at it next time.
The mayor, Chris Kim, said he had to apprehend. He had larger gun.
That's, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
I have something to say there.
Yes, sir.
And that is, is that we had, in defense of our two council members, and don't be defending them certainly by not, not by me, but it's simply the fact we had some very aggressive negotiations, and they were, at the end of the day, in my opinion, based on what we have fruitful. And something that I think is being largely potentially ignored is yes, this is the eighty-twenty split. That is not the, the number that was looked at as we entered that, that meeting. However, at the end of the day, we're looking at a reduction from five dollars a ton for solid waste to two dollars a ton for solid waste, which in, in my mind is significant because that directly impacts the general fund, which is our operating fund, on a basis. And if you recall, last year, that was not anticipated, so as a result, we took a hit. It has been anticipated this year, obviously, in the budget cycle, but we may be able to move some buns around with some other items now because of that reduction. Also, uh, I think it's very significant what they intend to do on Market Street as far as the dollar value, man-hours, et cetera, motivators, helping us haul the trees that have got to go, not live up, so gone down. It's just road stuff, um, out of the way and straighten out that road and then hopefully it'll be nearly ripe and ready for development at a future point in time. And we hope to see that happen, which in the end, that's, that's going to help. And we hope to see that happen, which in the end, that's, that's going to help us. Uh, also, at Ashantilly, from Ashantilly to ninety-nine, which is all city, they offered to clean out that ditch that is over there. So they'll clean out that ditch at the cost between two hundred, two fifty, three hundred K. Nobody really knows till they get in there to get that thing done. So what I see is, as far as at the end, it's net savings as to whether or not you got the twenty-five percent or whatever. And I know the, the committee is dissatisfied with the results. I mean, they made that a month in the clear tonight. However, in my mind as a manager, it is simply that in dollars and cents is equal and potentially better value when we're done, when you add up all of these savings. So I think it's an odd, a- at this point, i- in my mind, it's a, it's a mute point. I mean, there's obviously no vote has been taken, but I'm telling you, my recommendation to this city council is an eighty-twenty splash vote, accepting the stipulations and the memorandum of understanding that you all have in your booklet from the, from the county. So that's as far as I'll go with it, and that's it.
Thirty seconds, man, it's been gone with me. Very important, I want to compliment the manager for that, chuckling, skiing, but that, that was a chuckle. Uh, the ship was sinking, and thanks to the manager, we just grabbed all the baggage we could get and not lose everything. So he is responsible for adding those little bells and whistles, but we were sinking fast. And I will compliment the county commissioner chair, David Stevens. And I told him so, we talked about it on the phone, he was coming from Florida, and we talked about thirty minutes, and, uh, I complimented him because he called me because there was some issues, uh, that happened, and he called and even apologized for his counsel, so David, if you're listening, thank you.
I appreciate everybody's support with the call night from here, so I appreciate that, and that's a very professional.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to clarify it up, when the city manager said, uh, claimed the ditches out for Ashantilly that's inside the city, he's talking about Ashantilly subdivision, not the Ashantilly center itself.
That is correct, the subdivision that was annexed. Waiting, waiting up there, yes, sir.
It's not, yeah, I'd say it's not the Ashantilly center, it is a new subdivision where, where it get announced, so.
Mayor, just, I would.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly off what Mayor Protonalson said, he said that the county can go along with, uh, the important detail that if, if this body does not go to pass that in a fair amount of agreement, the county will collect seventy-five percent. They will not collect any, they, by law, they can only collect point seven-five percent of sales tax. So that's in the end, that's why we were asking for seventy-five, twenty-five. That's exactly how the legislature wrote it. There, there was a reason and a rationale behind what you gentlemen are arguing that they, the county commissioner did. Uh, so I think the county of last calculation, county manager stated that meeting. Uh, if the city does not participate, the county will lose approximately three hundred and fifty thousand over the license for that tea splash. Uh, and of course, we would get nothing, we would lose everything, we did not participate.
You still have to ask yourself, if they knew that they can only collect seventy-five without a center, they couldn't really give us seventy-five, but.
Well, I mean, that, that seems logical to us, and I'm saying that, but, uh, we've got huge, we've got all sorts of other things happening. But we're asking what the legislature, exactly what the legislature wrote, and they told us that's the way they wrote it. And, you know, my, my friend and colleague, Ed Popple, said that, you know, I, I believe the legislature did a disservice writing it that way, but nonetheless, they did, that's how they wrote it. Uh, so in the end, that's what we were asking for. The manager did a lot of hard work on this with, with the county, and I have to join at this stage thinking recommend. I don't have a choice, and I appreciate it. We've all got too much food.
I agree.
Any more comments or discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same?
I'll vote for it, too.
Carrie?
Wow.
I voted for it. If you got a chance to lose the money, or you ain't voting, I'm for it.
He looked bad for a second.
You never had, you never had a minute.
I do appreciate it. Okay, next up. Consider approval for a tea splash, remember Adam of understanding, uh, city attorney, city manager, when y'all went up, they kind of enlightened us on the meaning of this.
Yeah, really, we adopted the integral approval, and this sort of is a tend to it. I guess we can vote on it if we want to, but that's really what you just did.
Just love.
Thank you, thank you. This is, this was, that vote you just took, this is what's going to bind the two bodies, so I, I think we just did it.
We can, we both could just want it.
You can't actually, you, you, you can vote if you want to, it might go on her, it certainly will hurt.
I recommend you combine, you be just, just, you have to be very devoted on it.
No, it's a combined, they'd be together.
They're inseparable, I mean, that, you know, they go part and part.
I just wanted to base the cover around the agenda, that's all.
See if we pay attention to that.
The manager's fault, that's who.
It's him, we paying attention.
It's not my fault.
Okay, next up, consider approval of a Durin Fall Fest two thousand and nineteen application. We will take action on this tonight, uh, here a motion.
I made a motion, a second.
I hear a motion, I hear a second.
Second, I'm a second.
I'll say.
I'm a second, too.
Uh, have a motion, a second, can you comment? I would like, uh, make a comment, say that last year, tried something new, tried the two days, stood the one day. You know, there was a lot of us counting, and I'll admit, I'm one of them, but I'd love to see and hope, and hope that it goes through good, but there was, you know, a little question on, and I think it went great.
I'm sure.
I think two days went great, I'm turning it out, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to it. And I know y'all need all the volunteers you can get to.
All, all volunteers.
I'd just like to say, um, Stacy, the way we commented on last night, the way you saying this year, you're going to put a little more tight ship to the things that was kind of like a little bit out of order, because it's your first time doing it for the two days, so you may have some little kinks, but, um, as you see going forward that you have a tight ship on this one coming up, so that's good. We don't need that, we need everybody to be together, work together until nothing happens.
Well, every, every, I mean, you learn something from every event, and that's, nobody's perfect. Nobody gets a hundred percent all the time, so every year that I do encounter, we address the next year, and make it better than that. Better than that, they make more, they raise more money than I should, they never have, so.
They didn't miss it, you gotta base it a little bit more.
Yes, we are.
How many vendors did we have last year?
I had seventy-eight.
I, I definitely want to compliment, uh, want to make, well, compliment and talk about it. I, I work a lot in the tourism industry, uh, and there's something about festivals and having events that we haven't even quantified yet. People will travel from around this country. To me, it seems weird, but I know that's what people do, just to come to a function. And it's kind of like the bird watching thing, uh, people, they just love it. And you have these festivals, folks will show up, and they, they, they're in our bread and breakfast. Uh, the history, we talk about the Butler Island very silently, the author of the weeping time, stayed almost a whole week. Last week, this went by. So we have all kinds of people coming in, and it surprises me, when you have these functions like this, people, not only local, but from surrounding counties and far away, so the more, the merrier. Let's, let's keep trying the two days.
Any more comments, questions? Comments, questions, all for us, and everything is turned down?
Yes, sir, everything's in order.
Everything's, okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, same?
I'll vote for it.
You don't have to, I like to vote and let people know how I feel, so. Okay, pass, thank you. Skip the next one. Consider approval of a request for a variance at two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven Clark Street. We're going to take action on this tonight.
Yes, sir.
City manager, you want to enlighten us on this, or the?
We have the, uh, coach for us.
As, uh, we discussed last night, what this is, is a request for a variance to, to move the setback on Clark Street at this house from twenty-five feet to ten feet, which allows it to be put online with the other street, with the other houses on that street and in the area. And, uh, also, that particular, uh, block has an issue with, uh, an easement access on the back side, and if we don't allow the building to move forward online with the other buildings, they wouldn't have a backyard. So, um, it's, it's in that district where the older district, where the setbacks traditionally were shorter.
Karen, would you not agree it looks bigger if it's not aligned?
It will.
Yeah, um, it would cover the throat.
Got here a motion that we consider approval of this request.
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any more comments or discussion? Any more comments or discussions? So you think it's the probably best thing we can do?
I, I believe it's the proper thing to do, and the planning and zoning, uh, in there being last week reviewed the plan, uh, that the lady, Miss Parity, uh, brought to them, and their recommendation is that the city council approve the variance.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we have the zoning board, we trust them, and they bring us their findings, so.
And we, uh, put signs up, had the public hearing and all, and everything like we're supposed to.
There was the two weeks notice in the newspaper as required, and the, uh, lot had signage, uh, which announced the, the meeting of the planning and zoning committee, and a request for the variance.
Anybody, anybody show up to this agreement?
No.
Okay. Any more comments or discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, same?
It's Carrie, thank you.
They just missed it.
Next one's discussion only. Uh, disposition of the Adam Strange Building, we went into a great detail. Probably, uh, our discussion on this was about as long as the rest of the meeting, so tonight, we really don't have to go into a great discussion and everything on it.
I would like just a general consensus, my vote.
Yes, sir.
As to proceed normally as we would on any other structure of this nature through planning and zoning.
Okay, anybody have a comment on it, or question on it? What is actually, or are you asking?
I'm asking the fundamentals.
Okay. So treat it like any other property?
Yes, sir.
I mean, our announced, I would have to do that. Now, we're not saying to go over and tear it down, the order to tear it down, we order to go step by step.
For the, uh, for the public standpoint, rest assured, tomorrow morning at four o'clock in the morning, there will not be a bulldozer parked in front of the Adam Strange Building driving over it, tearing it down. That's not the case, because there is a, a steady course of action, uh, on the building, and it will eventually end up hitting the city council just because of the significance of the building and what we're trying to do, and where it's located, and all these other things that are going to happen. It will go before the municipal court judge, it will do all these things that any other structure will do. There's nothing top secret about what we're doing.
Where, and, and our attorney was not here last night, so where, where are we at as far as, we have our, we have our barrels, and, you know, it was discussed last night that that's not a deterrent. What safeguard does this city have? Let's say the thing falls tomorrow. What, what are, what are we, what responsibility do we have?
Well, first and foremost, and, and by the way, thank you all for letting me spend time.
Oh, yes, sir. Congratulations on it, too.
First and foremost, we're dealing with someone's property, so they, they have a lot of due process protections, as they should. I, I want protections on my property through due process. But our ordinances say that if the city official, uh, views something that's meets, possibly meets the circumstances of the nuisance, or that we, a citizen complains, but I think this is how this was initiated. We had a citizen complaining to the city. Then the city has to do certain things, and one of those is to get an opinion that we got, and the manager ordered that and got that opinion. At that point in time, he took precautionary steps, and we're now in the next stage. We're now in a state where, uh, Mr. McMuller, probably, uh, I would guess it would be, he or the landlord will, uh, send a, a formal notice or complaint to the landlord. And there are very specific steps. If the landlord resides here, they have to be served in a certain way. If they reside here, they have to be served in a certain way. They have to be duly and legally served and processed with notice of this, uh, in order to protect the process. At that point in time, the court could set a hearing up, and our ordinances are very clear, both sides can present cases, they can present witnesses, they can present death, and it is the court to decide whether or not a nuisance exists. Uh, if the nuisance, if the court deems a nuisance that not exists, that's the end of the sentence. If the court deems there is a nuisance, then it can, it, it then has to take some certain steps to make its next decision. There are several different standards as to how much it would cost to evade the nuisance, to, to cure it, versus how much the property's worth. And I think this would probably fall in the category that the cost of evading that nuisance would be astronomical. Uh, at that point in time, and, and if the court finds that it's not, it can order a debate, or to, to pay the, to pay the cost to evade the building. And what that simply means is bring it up to existing codes. And I, I think that would be very difficult to do at this point, based on what I've seen and heard, if you insist that, to bring that up. So the court could then order the building demolished, uh, and the city could demolish that place and leave it on the building. Uh, and then, you know, all manners of, of, uh, post-lean actions can be added to that one. But I think that once, to answer Mr. Steen's question, you know, once we got that citizen's complaint ordered, we had to give you the full, no doubt about it. And that, if we start neglecting that duty, uh, that, that's when a problem is going to arise.
And I'm doing publicly, Mr. McMuller, you're instructed to send an email later tomorrow.
I get it, Mr. McMuller, go coordinate service and all that with the director.
No, I've got issues with that, and I'll stand alone if I have to. Uh, we talking about jumping on something tomorrow. Me for one, I'd like to have more information, and I've never been denied by the attorney or the manager that we feel like we have to do that fast. Uh, and I'm, I'm very sincere with this, that, uh, we need to look at this one as we look at all others. Threat of lawsuits do not bother me, there's always threat of lawsuits, but we got a whole lot of other buildings and property in this city, and I've always been the one, if you're going to come after me, you're going to have to go after the others. And I, I don't see any hurry in here because we need to listen to the citizens, we need to huddle ourselves. I've made too many votes sitting at this table. The sky's falling, we've got to vote now, we, we got to do this, we've got to do it, then we get ourselves in trouble. I'm not going to put some of my councilmen on the spot, but I've seen it where we had to do something, and after we did it. We look at the newspaper, did we really do that? Ah, it's the paper, we voted on something. So let's just slow down a little bit, let's talk this over, and I'm on tape. Uh, safety is always on the move. We got a whole lot of other buildings here, too. I mean, I had my way, somebody talked about how to raise money, I only said humorously. I'd like to see if it could be rehabbed. I'm a pure optimist, I learned that with Dr. Anatoxism twenty years ago. I think it could be salvaged, and yes, I know it's privately owned, but I've got a privately owned building formerly owned that's owned by a nonprofit, and it is preserved in a cocoon. Most of you don't know about it. I know, the Overthaw Academy is still there, we didn't tear it down. We were wise enough to keep it long after I'm dead and gone. When somebody get the big bucks, they can bring that back to life again, if it's that historical significance, so. And I travel all over this United States and say that the building cannot be rehabbed. Well, yes, it can, almost anything can be rehabbed if you have enough money, at least a building, not our bodies, but a building. So let's talk a little bit more, I don't see any hurry in it. Let's just go out there tomorrow and hee-haw, you know, and start serving papers that's going to disrupt the community. It's all they can see by next week Thursday, bulldozers are coming in.
It's not the case.
I know, but I'm just telling you what's going to happen, I know what I'm going to do, I'm going to call my mayor.
Now, we wasn't, you weren't asking to, or suggesting that we tell her it's got to be fixed right now, or tore down.
be fixed right now or tore down? We were just bringing it to the needs and rules. That's gonna be the court's function, after a hearing to determine.
The manager is ready to serve papers tomorrow, that's just safe.
We got notified. And Mr. Lotson may very well be right, I mean, evidence may be presented here and be, that it can be fixed. Well, I'd love to.
Of course, she has to be noticed first.
That's, she has to be noticed.
That's all I was alluding to.
Then the court will set a hearing up, and, and there, there's, there has to be, if there's a reasonable amount of time, they'll also hear you on the next day.
I'm only my first, I'll say my opinion, the decision is always made to the council, that's proof and lots. I don't wanna see you serving the papers tomorrow till I find out what's going on. And if this council moves forward, we just did it. We sunk the ship and we got a few bells and whistles, so we move on. I'm just giving you my opinion.
The only thing that kinda, the only thing that, the question I have about it, is ever one of us has said that it shouldn't have been acted upon thirty years ago, or twenty years ago, what would've been the steps to take then? Notify the property owner first, and that's what we asking to do now, or notify the property owner to try and find a way to save it.
That is all. That is all, and that's-
We're not asking her to tear it down, we asking her to go ahead and start finding a way to save it.
That is correct. We need to notice her. If we don't notice her, your liability, and Mr. Bron may say, is increasing on a daily basis.
I'd love to see it as a rehab site, but-
Based on, uh, the bottom statement of the structural engineer would say, based on my observation, it is my professional opinion, the two-story back, uh, tabby building is unsafe and should be demolished for red harm to the public or surrounding property. I'm not even suggesting that. All I'm suggesting is to follow the rules and send a letter and notice this, this, uh, lady on-
His recommendation.
His recommendation and, and what's going on.
So, don't you wanna be with her and give her a copy of this and explain it to her?
Yeah, I wanna do it and write it.
Yes, we have to in our ordinance, we have to. And of course, I mean, we all know that Judge Moll, who's incredibly clear, and is gonna give her the time that she needs, she's not gonna write this issue down. Also, in that report that, uh, city manager referred to, is, uh, the city hired a structural engineer to come in to check it over, some of which, uh, is right number three delivered, said this building of the two-story tabby wall structure with wood framing was constructed criteria eighteen thirteen, and has been reported to be one of the few buildings in Darren's survived the Civil War. But it goes, say, exterior brick buttress were added to, was added to the west wall of the structure during its lifetime, the interior is finished with one solid boards attached to studs and does not appear to be original to the structure. And then it goes down, said heavy vegetation was reserved on the upper northwest corner, severe crack, cracking within the northwest south walls, buttress on the west side is separated from the structure, the building has bowed right on, uh, the northwest and south walls, second floor framing has collapsed in the southwest corner. So, basically, what you want to let, let her know is, this should've been done thirty years ago, so we doing our part now by bringing it to your attention.
I'm following the ordinance and codes and-
But we're not telling her to tear it down.
Of Derry and Georgia. No, sir, thanks.
And I did hear a comment, why are we jumping on this now? Is there a new condominium project wanting to come in? No, as the city attorney already pointed out, it was reported to us as safety violation, which brings us into litigation as well as the property owner, so we're going by our ordinance and covering the city's liability, and main thing, we hopefully keep someone from getting hurt, a possible loss of a life.
The only reason I even asked was due to the sensitivity, was to follow the codes of the city of Derry, that is all.
But yes, that's our, and our ordinance. Y'all change our law, we certainly do that. No, not now. But like now, that's our law. And until it's changed, we've got to follow. But I think I speak for every one of us when I say that we love that building, we'd love to keep that guy. And we fought hard to keep it, uh, no trick, so you know we're gonna fight hard to keep and do everything we can to-
Absolutely.
-save the building, still hope we can. And again, like I asked everybody, any ideas, suggestions, bring them to us, we need them. Any more discussion on this? Counsel reports, we ask everybody to give reports in three minutes, so let's try to keep our, uh-
I'm gonna first, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead. You're a pro team.
No report.
Can I get everybody's tip? Mayor Pro Tim, you have a report. Uh, Councilman Skeen, you don't, you get three minutes. Uh, Councilman, you're here.
I do not have to report this to you.
The Congress, I yield the remainder of my time. No, we're not yielding. Unless the Council says it's all.
I was gonna say that.
Council, let it show.
I yield the remainder of my time.
No, it's all. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm in his board, so. Councilman Skeen?
I'll do it, I'll do it in three minutes. Uh, you know, some, some of the, some of the, um, some of the things that we've had here tonight, you know, uh, they're not easy to talk about. The one we just talked about, our, our T-Spot, I mean, you know, that, that's something that, like I said, that has to be decided by our citizens, not us. But our citizens in the city do pay city and county tax, they do. And now, we're asking them to pay more. Uh, you know, I'm one of them, and, uh, our roads, you know, one of the county commissioners said, uh, we were greedy. He didn't say, he said the city is being greedy. The city is not greedy, the city is needed. We need our roads fixed, we need all our roads fixed, you know, we need our ditches fixed. And, you know, um, the commissioner that said that did a public act, he did say, he said, you know, I, uh, I think his words was, if I hurt the council's feelings, my, my feelings wasn't hurt. Um, I was offended by the remark, because coming from him, he's not that way. I've never known him to speak like that. But the city and the county is going to get along, we sure don't need the name call. We need to work together, stick together, and do things together. These roads and ditches, we have to work together. So, I say this, uh, for all the county commissioners and all the city council, let's do everything we can to make this, because our roads and ditches need it. We need to make this happen. And that ends my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Under three minutes.
Well, I mean, I'll think of a way to do it, man. No, I didn't want to delay, everybody has schools starting up soon, so let's, uh, be careful, watch children on the streets and everything, kinda keep our eyes open for that. I hear people would come in to a store somewhere and they say, you know, this happened, uh, somebody took something from my house, and three or four days later, or it was in a meeting the other day, and I got a call, people said that cars doing something at their house, and I'm, call nine-one-one. That's what we got our police department from, if you see something missing out of your yard, call nine-one-one right now. I do wanna say I appreciate all the city workers, everything's looking good, the city's coming good, I thank staff, the, uh, council staff and everybody's working good, doing great air and everything, and, uh, just wanna let everybody know, we are doing everything possible to save and repair the Butler House and the barn, I was out there myself, I have a cut grass, we rocks, but the whole council, city manager, city attorney, and everybody, uh, we're doing everything we can. So, it's not like we're overlooking it, neglecting it, and I appreciate if everybody would help us with it instead of, uh, talking bad about us, but we are trying. That's fine. City manager.
Careful. Oh, all day, that's right. Take good care. It's, uh, sometimes it-
Watch the law.
The, the council frustrates me sometimes, but I will say this, ninety-nine percent of the time, y'all arrive in the right equation, and yet, you go around the world a couple times, but we get there somehow, so that, that is hard in the end, uh, and you do the right thing, based on your judgment and why you were elected by your constituents. Secondly, in regard to the Strang House, I do understand, or the Strang Building, I do understand the historical significance of the building, but I also say, understand the public safety risk, and it's beginning to bother me terribly. It's leaning northward, which is, we were talking with Stacy about the, uh, Fall Fest, hope it doesn't fall during the Fall Fest. Um, and it's, there is a significant opportunity for it to do so, and we all want to preserve history any way we can, and I think that's what was being alluded to earlier. Um, the long and short of the whole thing is that this council's had to overcome some incredible hurdles that were inherited by this council, and this council has overcome all of those hurdles, and done a fine job with most of them. Uh, with regard to the splash money, I'm very pleased with the outcome, I do thank you for your vote, made my life a whole lot easier tonight, and then we'll now proceed on with all the money, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. City attorney?
I don't have a report, I just, for the public's knowledge, I just wanna clear something up, it seemed like Mr. Skeen was taking a lot of bullets in this T-Slot process, but you mayor appointed a committee, uh, it was myself, Mayor Pro Tim, Lotson, Mr. Skeen, Mr. Sweezy, and he was the chairman of that committee. Uh, that's why he, he, you know, advocated the city's position very eloquently professionally, so it seemed like he was taking a lot of bullets, but that's why he was the chairman of our committee, just for the public, don't worry.
Thank you, sir. City clerk? Do have one thing to end this with, it's a good thing, anytime a bigger city, uh, thanks us for something that we done to help them, it makes me feel good. This is from the Glen County Fire Department, says a two-hour, uh, just two-hour, uh, fire chief, uh, Chief Tony Carwack, said, "On behalf of Glen County Board of Commissioners, Glen County Fire and Rescue, thank you for your assistance and coordination of services provided on Saturday afternoon, June the first, two thousand nineteen, at the McRattail Inn in Sweets and Brunswick, Georgia Fire Incident. We thank you for your commitment to equal service. The fire tragedy caused life-changing damage to the business, guests, and our community. We thank you, and we appreciate you, the firefighters, EMS, and fire volunteers from fire divisions of the city of Brunswick, Townships of County of Brantley, McIntosh, Derry, Camden County, Jacob, I, Wayne, doing Glen, we truly appreciate all of you and admire your willingness to help. It would be very helpful to have someone in your experience assisting us, our educational training equipment, for aiding us in our noble life service, and we thank you for a job we have done, strength of our service lives, and individuals such as yourself. Again, thank you for helping us provide such a high-quality, coordinated, responsive service to the Glen County." So, not only do our volunteers work here and put their life on the lines to help out here, we also go to other counties. I, I happen to be on this fire scene with them, and our fire department above city and counties would've been major proud. Now, one thing, the other, is, uh, Chief Deverger, uh, split his department up, so we have some that stay in here to maintain fire protection while the rest went over. I probably say, I've been on the fire for thirty-two years, and they are, they doing a great job, so. We do need volunteers. Even if you can't do enough to roll the wheels and drive a truck, we need you. So, to see a firefighter, especially our chief, uh, Tony Carwack, they're going back to them, good job. Anybody got anything else? City attorney, correct, no, is there a session? I hear a motion, we adjourn. Second?
Hi.
We adjourn. Did you say don't take it?